We're good to go.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the workshop of the City of College Place. Today's Tuesday, December 7. It is 5:32 PM. Will the clerk take roll call and verify we have a quorum? I do want to let you know that Councilmember Peterson informed me that he will be just a bit late. He is traveling right now.
And Councilmember Nyhagen told me today that she would not be able to be here. So I don't see Councilmember Bobbitt either. Maybe he's joining late. Councilmember Cleveland?
I'm here.
Councilmember Selby?
Present.
Councilmember Sherman?
Present.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Also with us, Mayor Hernandez, of course, City Administrator Mike Rosatello, Finance Director Brian Carlton, Deputy Finance Director De Shree Schmick, Public Works Director Robert McAndrews, Police Chief Troy Tomaros, Fire Chief David Winter, Deputy City Clerk Sherry St. Clair, myself, City Clerk Lisa Nysel, and Councilmember Peterson just joined us.
Right on time.
You have a quorum, you're good to go.
All right. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Lisa, I think you're muted.
I forgot to share my screen, I'm so sorry, or share my audio. Give me just one moment, I'm not going to mess this up again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Lisa. All right, we have several workshop items tonight, and no action will be taken, just as a reminder. So first, we have with us Rebecca Francic from Basin Disposal, who's going to be discussing our recycle, their recycling program status.
Thank you. And Lisa, if you could give me control of my screen, I'll go ahead and just project my PowerPoint up. So far, all I have is your screen. There we go. Okay. So, um, I would just like to say how very much I appreciate your having me tonight. I have given this presentation to your Utilities Commission. And that was a great experience, except that we really did not have enough opportunity to talk afterwards about what you felt about recycling, what your community's goals were. So I hope tonight we'll have a little more time for that. For those of you who have not met me, and can I ask, can you see my screen right now?
Yes.
You're seeing the basin, okay. For those of you who have not met me, my name is Rebecca Francic. I am the Government Relations Person for Basin Disposal. I just started last year, so this is the end of my first year. My credentials include an agronomy degree from WSU, a Masters of Teaching, and from Top Nation, a Masters of Library Science from the University of Washington. I spent 21 years as a Pasco City Council member, 12 years as a board member on the Association of Washington Cities Board, 12 years as a member of the Public Works Trust Fund, and eight years on the Washington State Freight Mobility Board. So I think what you can take from that is my passion really is infrastructure, and garbage is one of the basic infrastructures that make our community safe, in my opinion. So I am thrilled to be working with Basin and thrilled to be having this discussion with you. So tonight, we are going to discuss, let me just move this over, and here's my contact information. If you'd like to contact me, please feel free to do so at any time. So tonight, we're going to discuss the current state of recycling, a joint partnership, what, what College Place and Basin could do together. And in this discussion, I'd like us to just dream a little bit, because I think that the way we've been recycling isn't working. We've had a lot of change in markets, and so I want your best and brightest ideas, because we're looking at a better way of doing things. So the real question comes down to, do we want to do real recycling, or do we just want to pretend? And I'll tell you what real recycling means as we progress, but I will tell you it's a lot harder than just throwing everything into a commingled, what do you call it? Not bucket, but, but bin. So let me tell you what I think we know. Basin thinks that College Place wants to recycle, and we are basing that on the fact that you've done it before, and also my conversation with your Utilities Commission. Unfortunately, garbage is a very, very stable commodity. It doesn't change prices. It's not really exciting. That is great. Commodities for recycling are extremely volatile. They go up, they go down. I mean, they turn on a dime, you have someone like China say, "We're not going to accept it," and all of a sudden, all the markets dry up for certain products. So there is risk with recycling. And that is something that we have to have structured into contracts, and you have to know so that you can make the best, most educated discussions about what products you want to recycle, because not all products are the same. So currently, the items that can be, well, I'm going to say fairly easily recycled, we know these can be recycled. Newspaper, mixed paper, corrugated cardboard, aluminum and tin cans, number one and two plastics, and non-heat-treated glass. However, plastics and glass are very problematic. And the reason is, realistically, people do not know the difference between glass and heat-treated glass or ceramics. So if you have any of these products thrown into a glass stream and it gets crushed, you, it's just garbage now. It is no longer recyclable material, because there's no way to segregate it out. And then people, that this lid on the top of this number one and two plastic jar is not recyclable. Your milk jugs, those little red rims around the rim, those are not recyclable. So people really do not understand what a clean recycling stream looks like, and if we undertake this journey together, there's going to have to be a significant education piece to it. I'll give you the example that I gave the UTC. Here we see all sorts of things when we have commingled products. This is stuff that we see thrown into the plastic bin. And this is just off my own kitchen counter, and Ms. Selby cannot answer this question, but the rest of you, how many of these products do you think could actually be put in a recycling bin? I will tell you, there's only this one, this one, and I'm not sure about this one, maybe, but maybe not. This glass, right here, when you drop it, it breaks into little pebbles. It's a very special safety-type glass. It cannot be recycled. None of those great little containers that you get that have the snap tights, they're heat-treated. They cannot be recycled. The light bulbs cannot be recycled, because they've got the ceramic thing and metal on it here. This is a ceramic mug, cannot be recycled. This is a china plate, it's got a little chip there. It cannot be recycled. Corningware, this is a corningware measuring cup, it cannot be recycled. But you can see why people are confused. I mean, this looks like glass, this looks like glass, that looks like glass. All these look like glass to me. I might be able to differentiate between light bulbs and this and a plate, but this other stuff is tricky. The, the main message that I want to give you tonight is that it is the quality of your recycling that matters. It is not the volume. So what we find is people think things should be recycled, so that's how contamination happens. I don't know if this plastic spoon can be recycled, but it's plastic, and it should be, so I put it in the recycling stream. And then that contaminates the whole thing, and contaminated recycling is garbage, expensive garbage. Because you can dump your garbage for, I don't remember what your Walla Walla rates, but it's somewhere around $63 a ton. When you go through the whole sorting process, it's significantly more. So wishing it so does not make it true. So there are things that we really need to consider about this. So this is what we know about real recycling. Used objects have to be turned into something useful. If, if we're not reusing what we're recycling, it's not recycling. It's still just garbage. It costs money to process, and how much money it costs depends on what the commodity market is, and it's volatile. It very rarely makes a profit, and this is from Derek Dietrich, the, the CEO of our company. He's been in this business a long time. And he said, "The days that it makes profit are so few, he cannot even remember when they were." But Basin thinks it's the right thing to do, and I think the community and the world thinks it's the right thing to do. We all have looked at those gyres off in the oceans, and, and we know it's time. So the other thing we know about recycling is that it requires effort. It has to be kept clean. There can be no contamination if you really want a successful recycling plan. It has to have a market, which means when the market changes, so for instance, if you elected to do glass, and then the market for glass disappeared, you have to be willing to stop it and just put it into the trash. It is volatile. What you recycle today may not be recyclable tomorrow, and that's part of that education piece, which gets tricky, because people get comfortable doing one thing, and then you change it on them. So we're talking to ourselves internally, and then to you externally, looking for some feedback about how do we make recycling work? We think we need a new model. We think it has to be clean, so single recycling. So one bin for glass, one bin for newspaper, one bin for mixed paper, and never shall the three meet. Smaller trucks, truck drivers are in short supply. Trucks are extremely expensive. They're over $400,000, and they're hard to get. So we're wondering if, what if we had neighborhood models where people would come to your house and pick up your recycling, and then take it back to a gooseneck trailer that's parked in a central location, and then somebody takes the gooseneck trailer when it's full, and somebody else continues in your area collecting trash? That's just one of the ideas we've come up with. Please know that we want to know what your ideas are. And then, we're also talking about flexibility. So what if you get three or four newspapers, and all you want to do is newspapers? In my house, I don't drink pop, so I don't need one for tin cans. They're just, there are very, very rarely tin cans in my house, unless the family comes over and somebody brings beer. But newspapers, we've got a lot of newspapers, and we have a lot of mixed papers. So what if we gave the public the option of choosing what they wanted recycling, to recycle, sorry? One of the things I want to bring to your attention is the Walla Walla Swac has been doing a lot of delving into what they can do financially, what they can do physically, what recycling's going to look like in Walla Walla. And I would urge you to make sure that you have people that are on their swag. At this point in time, they have recommended no plastic. And the reason is, it's just too likely to be contaminated, and so what they really end up with is expensive garbage. They're holding their options on glass. Their community is very interested in glass. They hired a consultant who is going to tell them what the realities of that are, what the markets are likely to be, and how expensive it is. It's really important to make a good choice at the get-go, because, for instance, glass takes specialized equipment. And once you have that specialized equipment, even if you turn it off, we have a, a contract for recycling, it's a Schedule B, where you can turn things on and off. Say, "This doesn't work, this does work," but if you have something like glass, you'll still have to pay the full cost of whatever that equipment is. So the questions, I guess I want to ask you as a council is, do you think you and your citizens are going to feel good with less frequent pickups? So if you only are doing newspaper, what if we came and we picked it up just one time a month, instead of every week? And how price-conscious are you? So cleanliness and careful selection of what you recycle is going to reduce your costs. But you need to really carefully consider how you're going to pay for it. Then what about green waste? There is legislation, I believe there will be legislation coming down this year. The legislature has very clearly signaled to us at the WRA, they do not want green waste in landfills anymore. The reason being is, green waste produces methane gas, which is one of the things that helps drive climate change. But if we undertake green waste, there has to be a market for the compost. I was lucky enough to go to Cedar Grove over, just underneath Bellingham, and they've got an amazing facility. But they have a lot of compost that has not been claimed. And I said to my sister, "Oh, my gosh, you ought to go get some of this stuff." You know, they're, they're giving it away, and she goes, "Hmm, don't think so." I said, "Why not? It's beautiful." I saw it, and she goes, "You know, I've had some of it, and it has plastic in it." So if we're going to do green waste, again, we have to have some kind of a campaign that says, "Do not put your green stuff in a plastic bag." It has to be just strictly organic material into a bin. And then the question is, who will commit to using it? If you're an apartment owner, probably not. If you're somebody with a large yard, I would think you would be very interested. So then we have to talk about, and how do we pay for it? So when I talk, give this talk to communities around the state, there are communities that really do not like mandates. I think people are very fatigued with vaccine mandates, and they're saying, "We don't want to mandate anything." But if you go by voluntary subscription, our experience says that you will probably have between 27 and 30% of your population recycling. The good news is, those people are committed, and they probably will be willing to be educated and keep their streams clean. The bad news is, it costs quite a bit more. And so if you have a universal subscription, then everybody pays for it, and it's available for anybody if they decide that this month, maybe they want to do it. But it also leads to people being angry and contaminating your stream. So there's, there's pros and cons to that. And then the next question would be, if you do want to do recycling, we would ask you to sign and adopt a Schedule B. What Schedule B does, and, and it's, you know, a detailed document that tells you what our responsibility is, what your responsibility is. But the most important part of it is, it puts you in the driver's seat. You get to say, "Yes, we'll recycle." "No, we won't recycle. We're going to recycle plastic, but we're not going to recycle newspaper," or, you know, whatever configuration you want. And that is why we would do that. But we would ask that if you get down to the wire, and you are doing recycling, and let's say you take the voluntary subscription, and the market drops way out of newspaper, for instance. And now the rates are not self-funding, will you underwrite those costs? Because someone has to pay the price of the ultimate disposal, and so how would you want to accomplish that? And this is a little bit uncomfortable in a conversation, because we can't guarantee you anything. As I said, these costs are very, very volatile. The only thing we can guarantee you is, we'll give you the option of turning things on and off, if they become too expensive, or if there's no longer a market. Um, the other thing I would like to ask is, if you would like to create a subcommittee to work with Basin on recycling, because I think this is going to be a conversation that as technology changes, as our experience changes, and as the markets change, you know, you might say, "Whoa, that, that education program you brought to us is not working at all. We need to do X, Y, Z." And we would like that kind of a feedback, so that we can also make changes. One of the other things that Basin would suggest is, if we elect to go ahead with College Place, we'd like to consider, what would happen if we had a regional recycling all through the tri-city area? And Walla Walla County, sorry, I don't remember what my counties are. Because if we did that, then everybody within Basin's programs would be recycling the same things. It might help with the education component. It might help with the price. I don't know. Just something to throw out there and have you think about. So I want you to know, this is how we calculate what the cost is of recycling. So typically, it's a curbside collection program or a Dropbox collection. And then you've got your green waste. So what we do is, we take your municipal solid waste times however many tons, plus your recycling, plus however many tons, plus your green waste, times whatever the commodity is, times the tons collected, and that's how we come up with what we call WICOT, or that's how your weighted average cost of disposal, which can change depending on what the commodity is and how much of it you're, you're bringing in. But I just want you to know, we really do have a formula, and this is available for you to see. You know, we can run it through some programs and have you check it, see if that's a program you're interested in. So before we have this conversation where you give me your ideas, I guess I'd like to know, do you think you and your committee or your community are committed to keeping your recycling clean, no contamination? Do you think, Derek is not sure you can do it. I'm saying, I'm sorry, it's the 21st century, people can grow up and do this. People want to do it, they want to do it right, they just need to be shown how. So he and I have a little different view on the public. I don't know what your view is. Are you willing, College Place, to pay the true cost of recycling? And are you going to subsidize the shortfalls through the entire population's rates or through surcharges? Most importantly, do you have the courage and the flexibility to stop recycling a program when it no longer has a market? Again, Schedule B will give you the power to toggle that option on and off. I think the other thing to ask you is, will you feel successful if you recycle a smaller number of non-mingled items, which results in clean, thoroughly recycled product versus putting everything into a commingled bin, and knowing you're losing a large percent of that to contamination, and it's just going to the landfill anyway? I'm going to say this over and over through these conversations, and you'll hear it in our education pieces, too. Quality is more important than quantity. If you are in doubt, you throw it out. You don't guess. If you really don't know that it's recyclable, you throw it out. So quality is more important than quantity. The other thing we came back with is, what if we do a continuous feedback loop? And we report the clean, the cleanness of your recycling. So for instance, what if we say, "Okay, so in this block of places, these people, they've got it down 100%." If we do that, it requires some sampling of recycling. We can give you a report card, would people feel like Big Brother's watching us, or do they think that would be helpful? Because we could say, "And this is what didn't work, and what you could improve." This takes a few more trucks, or maybe some more people to inspect the recycling, so it might cost more. But you would be doing real recycling. You'd get better service, and we're assuming you'd get better quality and a better product, because you'd actually know if what you were doing was working. And I say that because you ought to see my husband and I go down to, in Pasco, we have central recycling bins. And, and the arguments that we have about what you can and cannot recycle are hilarious. You know, so we're playing out, and I'm going, "That's mixed paper." Nope, you can't do that. It's got plastic. Yep, you can do that. That's newspaper. No, oh, egg cartons. Are those cardboard? I didn't know if they were cardboard or not. Turns out they're mixed paper, but we keep running into, you know, every time we do recycling, we run into one thing that we just don't know. So I, I think that having good education and, and a feedback loop that says, "Hey, stop doing this," would be helpful to me, so I do it right. So this is your turn. Do you have any questions, and do you have any answers, and do you have any suggestions? Because I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to have this conversation, and to maybe form a program that meets your needs and saves the world. So go ahead, I'm going to stop sharing my screen unless you want me to go back to any. I think I'll leave the screen up in case you want me to go back to any of the slides, and it's all yours, Lisa, if you'd be in charge of, of calling people, because I can't see them.
I'll take care of them, Rebecca. So let's go through our council members for questions or comments. I'm sure there will be some. So Councilmember Cleveland?
I'm a person, Jerry is not here. I'd really like to create a recycling program that makes economic sense. What's the best way to do that? I'm not sure. But I wonder if creating some essentially kind of pilot program to see what works. You know, try to find something that's relatively safe, even if it's, you know, we could just do something like, you know, steel and aluminum cans only, and just do that as like a pilot program, maybe, you know, picked up once a month. I guess cardboard is another one that's usually pretty, pretty safe. So if we could do just cans and cardboard once a month, make it opt-in, and if you do opt-in, you have to, you know, maybe do that in person or via phone call, and listen to the, the spiel about the education on it. I guess, I, I want to see recycling, but I want to see it make economic sense. So I guess this is some of my thoughts at this moment, at least.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I don't think, you know, I really view this as kind of dipping a toe in the, in the pool. I, you know, and we're not talking about hiring trucks, drivers, and buying bins, I don't think, and sorting exotic glasses and chinaware. I think it's, I'm even thinking about a minimalist, a large, when I look at my house, Amazon's delivering a, a watch battery in a refrigerator, you know, cardboard box, you know? And so those are the things that I'm, when I talk to my neighbors and whatnot, it's, it's really cardboard, you know? It's not, it's not plastic bottle lids, or, you know, this type of stuff. It's, it's really cardboard. And there are some cans occasionally, and there are some other things, but I'm kind of thinking it would be nice if there's even some, and I know there are some recycling places, but even at a, even just to get this thing going, so we can kind of say that we're doing it, and we're trying to do it, is maybe some central locations throughout the town that have a big bin just to collect clean cardboard and newspapers. I don't know if you can even commingle those. You know, I, I drive by Walula a lot. I see PCA Walula, and it seems like cardboard recycling there is, has taken on a new life. And I understand there's an economic, you know, viability there, but it, it does seem like that seems to be the one option that there is maybe a market for, maybe not be profitable, I don't know. But once again, I think it'd be nice to just try to get into this easy and say, "So I've got a whole garbage can full of cardboard at the end of, you know, whatever, a week or two. Where do I take it?" You know, that's, that's not a, a long drive for me or whatnot. I think, I think it's just something like that would be kind of neat, just to get, try to ease back into it. So anyway, those, those are my, my thoughts right now, anyway.
Could I just interrupt and ask a clarifying question? So Pasco does have central recycling, take cardboard boxes, too. And interestingly enough, one of the thick problems that we have there is, they're supposed to be squashed flat. And I am at an age where I don't have the hand strength, even with my X-acto knife, to squash a lot of those Amazon boxes flat. Man, are they tough. But would you be interested in a central recycling location versus curbside?
Oh, yeah, I don't, you know, curbside, I, I mean, we talk about economic viability. We have a diesel truck, like driving all over College Place to pick up cardboard boxes. Great, you know? You know, I think, I think for me, it's a central location, and I have a picture of somebody with a box cutter, cutting the box down, instead of trying to, you know, get it on the ground and roll on it to make it flat, so, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren, you're very descriptive.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's one of those days. I apologize. It's, it's, it comes from experience, actually, my own personal experience. I think, yeah, you know, I think like maybe two locations or one location in the town, you know, somewhere, anyway.
Now I, I laugh.
I thought I had. Set up some stations at parks. Or we could contract or not necessarily contract, we'd be asked some uh, some businesses to volunteer a sp- uh space. In the corner of their parking lot, maybe Walmart or Andy's.
That's, that's a great idea, you know, Asian, yeah, I like that.
Alright, Councilwoman Selby.
Okay, I have a question and then I have, as you can imagine, a bunch of comments. Um, so my question is, when we talked about the idea of joining with Walawala for recycling, would we be joining? Just for recycling or would we need to combine all of our garbage uh contracts?
I I I think at this point in time, we're just talking uh recycling, um. But the rea- it's not necessarily joining Walawala, it's joining the Walawala SWAC, which is the the whole regional planning. I just think being part of those planning things is so important. So it's it's really the county planning that I'm urging you to be part of.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, so a couple of thoughts, um, one is. I've been hearing from my students that there is interest among Walawala University students. Both some of the. I don't know what they call them, but they're like uh in charge of the dorm club or something. And then some of their uh. ASLU, the Student Association Officers are also interested in um working on recycling. And the university is sort of separate from us, but it still seems like to me that it would be good for. Good for us to work together, obviously, so I think it would be helpful, I don't have any names unfortunately. But um, I'm sure that the university can come up with some, um. And. So. The thing about recycling is transportation is a huge cost. It's never going to be completely economically viable as long as we are subsidizing uh cheap plastic. And um cheap packaging and encouraging all of that. Which is a bigger issue than College Place can deal with, however, um, I still think it's the right thing to do. As long as we're actually recycling and the. The biggest problems that I've observed is, you know, keeping it clean and the reason why. Businesses tend not to like the recycling bins in the corner of their parking lots, they get all excited when you, when they go in and they're like, yay, this shows how green we are. And then after a while, they turn out to have garbage dumped all around them. And people are just, if it doesn't fit, they just sort of drop it on the ground beside and wander off and it's just like. It just turns into a nightmare and they're like, okay, we're getting rid of these. Um, and I remember reading about back a long time ago, it was back about the time when. The US was starting to move towards mixed recycling, which is, you know, kind of where we went down the wrong path, I think. And I was reading about Japan and what they had was they had something like twenty seven different. Uh bins. And everybody's like, how on earth can you do that, well, they had self-appointed grannies that would go along, go around and look in your bins. And if they found anything that was in the wrong bin, they would, you know, like bang on your door and. Prang you and make you fix it and, you know, sort of tell everyone and, you know. Um, and so what I have, what I'm thinking is the idea of two or three places. I think is really good, I think we ought to think about ways that we could potentially have them staffed. And um, you know, we might be able to combine with like. Uh, someplace like Goodwill or someplace, and then you would have to have a way to like shut the gate when they're not staffed. So that people wouldn't be coming and dumping a bunch of stuff. Um, so it would be tricky to find, you know, who could, like, sort of, I mean. It's, I don't think it's like a full-time job for somebody to stand there and watch people do their recycling, but, you know, somebody who's. There, who's near there that can, you know, come out and say, hey, you know, do you know what goes where, you know, what we. Oh, sorry, we, that actually can't go in and this is why, and, you know, I think that would um potentially help a lot. You know, Goodwill is the place that I see doing that, you know, they have their trailers and they, you know, have um. People, uh people staffing them and I don't know how exactly we would go about doing it, but I think that's kind of a. It's an option, I think it might be interesting to look at, put it that way, because I take my stuff out to the Walawala Recycling. And it, you know, usually when I'm there, there's other people there too, pulling up and, you know, so people are doing it, but it's not. By any stretch of the imagination, most of the population. So I think that's it. Oh, and I do have someone who's interested, if we do end up making a advisory committee, I have a citizen who's interested in being on it. Or I know them, I don't have them, I guess. Not like tied up in my basement.
On that note, Councilmember Sherman.
Oh, that's a different kind of recycling melody, um. So, at the central recycling locations, Rebecca, are, is that, is the stuff that you receive there clean?
I will tell you, the the cardboard is very clean, um, because people seem to be able to clearly identify what's cardboard. The commingled is a mess, uh. I, sometimes it's clean, sometimes it's not, I was gonna say, I've been in Misa a couple of times recently and they have people that are just putting garbage next. Next to the recycling containers, I don't know if they actually bought, brought um recycling in and then put their garbage there too. They have unlimited collections, so I'm not sure why they would bring their garbage there, but anyway. That's been interesting and and it's very annoying to the city manager, they're commingled, um. Commingled on one end of town is really clean, the commingled on the other is is, it's completely unusable. It it's just going straight to the garbage because they've put in so many um other things.
Right.
So it kind of depends on where you're at. And who the community members are is my, my opinion, and if you have somebody that's just flying through that doesn't care. Um, they're just trying to clean out their car. Uh, one of the communities had asked us, well, why don't we just put garbage, a a garbage can next to the recycling, so people wouldn't do that. But then you invite people that, you know, don't want to pay for garbage to, yeah, so that that has its own issues.
Yeah, I think I'm asking because it felt like when we had recycling before and some of the comments that we received once we had to cancel it. Were that people who wanted to recycle were, they didn't care if it was going to be more expensive. The problem came when it was going to be a blanket rate to everybody. And so people who didn't care were like, well, I don't, I'd rather just not pay. And so the other people, it seemed like there wasn't, you know, when we're, you know, five, ten bucks a month and potentially even more than that. That they would have been willing to pay for that service of coming to the house, but if a central place works. Then I can see that that would be a good solution to those who want to participate camp, but I, I mean, it just takes a lot of education. Um, honestly, I don't know where the recycling place is in town and, you know, probably that's, I haven't looked. Um, but I'm not the person in charge of recycling in my house. So it's, you you know, I I would love the convenience of having it here and I wonder, you know, if I'm paying for it. I'm gonna be more um, more attentive to making sure that it's following the rules, but I mean, I get confused on. Plastics when we had that, um, you know, but I think that. For convenience depending, but I mean, that is potentially cost prohibitive, you know, for someone to go around and go to only the houses that want to be served. But I wonder if dirty stuff was coming when it was required. You know, like recycling's required and now it's, you know, people aren't following the rules, but they don't want to. Those are some of my.
Right, we also had um, someone on your UTC asked, what if uh they called and let us know when they had things at their house? Cause someone had said, you know, sometimes he's got a lot of boxes and sometimes he has nothing. And and so we were trying to think, well, I I don't think we could make everything at will and make it financially viable, but maybe we could say. You could call on these days if you have recycling and we could come pick it up, but that's why we started talking about, well, what if we had somebody who just ran in on a smaller truck? And brought things back to like a gooseneck trailer versus having these garbage trucks run up and down your streets. Um, I I don't know, these are all things we're just looking at, considering. In our particular house, we don't have a truck, so I mean, anything that we can't get in a car doesn't go recycling because I'm not going to carry it. Two miles down the road.
Right, no, good questions, thank you so much for your presentation, I appreciate that you guys are looking for other solutions.
Councilwoman Boyle, oh, go ahead, Rebecca.
Oh, I I was just gonna say, one of the things I thought we had to do, and and this kind of requires that we have the same regional recycling. But that we have QR codes, so people can say, well, can you recycle this thing or can't you, and you could pull up a QR code. But um Derek told me the reason they can't do that right now is because if they pick up a recycling. Container in Pasco and it gets moved over to Wallo, everybody's rules are different, so that hasn't. But if we developed a regional plan, maybe that would work better, I don't know. Or find someplace besides the containers to put the QR codes.
I'm, go ahead, Lauren.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to, but I just kind of response to Councilwoman Sherman, you know, when we stopped recycling, it was, it was more of a. And that that kind of begs the question, is there even a market for cardboard, you know, because, or something like that, because. We really stopped it because it turned into a game, if you recall, the blue bucket was your garbage, the green bucket was recycling, they all went to the landfill. You know, and that was the, that was kind of the, you know, you felt cheap, you know. And so um, hey, we're recycling, no, we're not, you know, so, you know, I would just add that that was, that was really, it kind of killed it because the market collapsed, you know.
For whatever reason, I can tell you the market for cardboard right now is going up. That's now suddenly a, it's enough of a valuable commodity, I asked Derek if we'd have people pulling. Cardboard out of our bins and then taking it to a local recycler, and he said, we're not there yet, but he's seen it happen, so.
So I think it's really good that we're talking about this because I have, just in the short time that I've been on the council, I've had a number of people that have asked me. If it's coming back, why it's gone, all of those things, and I've heard the same thing is what Lauren just mentioned about, you know. We can go through the action of recycling, but it's, it's all hitting the landfill, all of these things. But I do think that College Place has a um, a large enough pool of people who are interested and who really do care and who would like to recycle. But I think that it's also really important as we're looking at these and whatever just choice we make on how this is structured. I think it really has the potential for a really strong buy-in. But we have to keep it simple, so maybe it's not the glass that, I mean, admittedly, even after you showing us all of those pictures of the things that can and cannot be done. If you put a glass bin literally outside my door and said, here you go, you've been educated, go for it, I go, hmm, eh, maybe not. So I think if we want to do this, it needs to be the items that clearly are simple, I think we need to make it. Not a lot of effort, I know where our community recyclers are up in the dump and. I can tell you, I maybe get crushed cardboard boxes up there once a year after Christmas when nothing else fits in my stack. But other than that, it's just, it's, our lives are so busy at this point, but I think it's something that we have to make sure is. If we want it to be successful, we keep it as simple as possible.
I I agree, I think that if you're gonna do glass, you say wine gla- or wine bottles only. You know, no other glass, there might be others, but whatever you can do to reduce that contamination, that's my gut feeling, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be part of this discussion, I'm supposed to be listening, but. But again, my experience with my husband, when we go to the recycling center is just things like that. Is this, can we, can, yes, no?
Yeah, and so then if there's too many questions and it makes it too complicated, it, the people don't have time for that much more brain power anymore.
We do need a solution for all of the wine bottles in this valley.
Oh, so this is probably totally not the place for that, but I will say, up in Shalane County. They have a program going on because Shalane has so many wineries and so many wine bottles. A student actually created something that grinds it down to actual sand. And they are about to completely recover the Shalane City Park Beach with ground down water bottle sands. That's all.
Wow.
Uh, Councilmember Selby raised her hand.
Um, I absolutely agree with the keep it simple and so in my. Watching of this over the last thirty years, the two things that basically you can always recycle. And have them be actually recycled if they're clean is corrugated cardboard and aluminum cans. Um, so I would recommend that we originally basically just stick to like that. Um, and make sure that we can keep that working, um. And I, I think we really need to think carefully and probably with um citizen input about. How we do the transportation piece, um whether we have a few. Um, centralized places or if the truck comes by once a month. Or if it goes by once a week, but it only stops if you've got, if they can see that you've got stuff out. Um, somebody take, you know, there's the little truck that takes it to the bigger truck, you know, um. I think there's a lot of different ways that we could do it, the other thing that I was thinking about, um, is in my impression. The cameras that we've put up at the parks have actually been quite helpful in, you know, we've uh. Been able to follow up and educate or prosecute whatever. Um, the people who are doing things that they shouldn't, and so potentially, we may want to think about um cameras at the recycle center. To see if we're having problems, who it is and how to, you know, how to educate better.
Did you have thoughts about green waste?
I liked the idea of green waste until you said that thing about the gases.
Oh, well, it's a good thing about doing green waste.
Yeah, the the green waste takes the the organic matter out of the landfill and prevents gases.
Oh, okay, I missed her.
It's a good thing.
I'm a big fan, I need it.
Yeah, I I agree, I've actually um started. Um, composting here at my house, so, you know, compost bin because it felt so weird coming from another community that. We didn't even throw a banana peel away, you know, so it went into a a a. A green bin, right, um, so it was strange, but I'm gonna stop and go back to Councilmember Cleveland who raised his hand.
Uh, I like the idea of yard waste, I'm just, but everyone can empathize that with that and, you know, most everyone has a yard, but. Uh, I would like to see the numbers on what it would be cost to um provide a green waste bin. Uh, to folks that would want it and pick it up each week. Um, would it, would it be feasible to have the bins, like you only get charged if they come by to pick it up? Or would that, I I'll just off the top of your head, if you know, Rebecca.
Well, I think you have to have a structure um built in. Let's see, how do I, so if the bin, if the truck comes by and you don't have a bin out there, the truck is still paying the driver and the gas and. You know, the depreciation on the truck, so I think you have to have some kind of a schedule where you can or can't. I mean, you can or don't have to have your green waste out. But but depending on like, maybe it's every other week, I don't know how often people mow their lawns and trim their trees, but. Um, uh, there has to be some mechanism because it can't just be whenever you feel like it. Because we we we're still gonna have to pay for that truck or those drivers to go through. Um, so somehow we have to figure out what that recovery cost looks like.
Yeah, well, I guess I just like to see the numbers on what to, like, see a proposal for what it would cost to make it an option for people to have green waste. Uh, my wife and I have a large yard and uh my wife, uh, whenever I mow the lawn. Uh, my wife and I have a large yard and, uh, my wife, uh, whenever I mow the lawn insists that, uh. We load up the clippings into the truck and take it down rather than tossing it into the trash. So. I would definitely get some use out of putting at least some of it into a green waste. And I think most people, you know, it's like, oh, it's just, I mean, it takes, it takes up a lot of space, you know, just put grass clippings in. So. Even if we did only grass clippings or whatnot, you know, no bags, grass clippings only, or tree branches or weeds or whatnot, I don't know, but. Um, I would suspect there'd be at least some people would be interested in it. I guess I'd just like to see some of the numbers on what it would cost to, to get a bin. Give it to people and give them a monthly, uh, bill for green waste specifically in addition to the regular.
Do you have any types of mechanisms whereby you can, um. Poll your community and see who is interested at this price, who's interested at this price, who's interested at this price? Um, I, I guess we can structure anything you want us to do, but we kind of need some direction on. What we're structuring. So what I'm hearing is definitely keep it simple, definitely, um. Maybe start a pilot program, something that we know is successful like cardboard or tin cans, um. Possibly green waste. Um, I haven't heard if, I've heard, I think that you do not really want to make it everybody. You want it to be voluntary. Am I, am I distilling what I'm hearing correctly?
I think that, I think so because I think about back where I came from and people who. Um, felt forced to do it were the ones who, you know. Well, they want me to recycle, so I'm not gonna clean this tomato can out, right? And they just throw it in there contaminated, right? So they completely then blow it for the rest of us who are trying. So I think it would have to be voluntary, especially if we're needing to attach a fee to offset expenses.
Okay.
And Councilmember Boyle had her hand raised.
With the green waste bins in other areas that do them. Are there certain things that can't go in? Is this something that we'd have to be careful about educating? What kinds of outside waste can and cannot be? Put in there?
Not trying to cloud the issue, but one of the things that we're looking at in our facility. Because Pasco is growing so fast is do we want to put in an anaerobic digester? If we build in it, which would take a few years to put together, but if we do an anaerobic digester, you can put anything in there. I mean, food scraps, anything. If we do not have an anaerobic digester and it's just compost, it, um. I was gonna say, I don't think it can be food, but I don't know if that's true because the one up in, um, Cedar Point had a whole. Truckload of broccoli soup come in. So I don't know the answer to that. I guess I'd have to get back to you on that and I will find out the answer about that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Rebecca, um, you were talking about. Would be we, would we be willing to stop the program should we find that it's not working? So my question would be. What type of cost doesn't, would basin disposal incur that they hired people or they got the trucks and we said, well, we're gonna end our program? Um, we don't need you as of next week, right? What, what does that do for basin disposal?
Well, that's what happened the last time you quit. We ended up with a million dollars of stranded assets. And so we can't afford to do that kind of a contract again. Which is why I'm saying we really need to, to be talking this through because, you know, you, you also cannot afford to. Uh, strand your assets. I, I know what city budgets look like, so, um. We, we need to make careful choices that we think we can be successful at. And when I'm talking about, um, quitting. You know, there are some things where you can quit and it doesn't matter. You can just repurpose those bins. But glass is one of those items where it's not the same. Glass has to be treated very specifically, very different. It messes up equipment. So if you went into glass, um. That might be a more expensive program if you decided to stop. Whereas if you go green waste, no green waste, you know, those can be repurposed, those, those containers.
Sure, yeah, that's what I figured. Okay. You know, and we do have ways of polling our citizens. Mike does. Survey monkeys, um, things like that, that he puts on Facebook or our website. QR codes that leads people to it. So, um, it's definitely something that I think we can poll our citizens, you know. Whether it be if you're interested, are you willing to pay this much? If, you know, maybe even put a few quizzes. What's recyclable in the, you know, paper, right? Because. I remember always, you know, struggling, is wrapping paper recyclable or is it not recyclable, right?
Yeah.
And i- is it waxy or is it not waxy, right? It's kind of hard to tell. Um. You know, food containers, right? So I, yeah, I gone through all that. And so I think, you know. Doing some testing, some fun testing, some education and. Willing to see if our community is willing to, one, take the time to do it and to pay for it. Um, are they, you know, is it really a commitment or is it just something that they want to feel good about?
Right. And, and you know, again, you are the client. We are just the service provider. If you tell us you just want to do commingled everything. You can certainly do that. You just have to know that it's probably gonna end up in the landfill and you're paying. A hundred and sixty-three dollars a ton instead of fifty-three. So.
Right.
But it's ending up in the same place. So.
Which is why we ended it last time.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
There, there are real, I guess basin really does want to enter the, the recycling business. We just think that it's the right thing to do. And I, I loved your comments about keep it simple, do a pilot program and, and Mr. Cleveland, we're right with you. It has to be economically feasible because none of us can just afford to throw money away. It's how do we make it all work?
Councilmember Peterson?
Well, I know what I'm gonna do when I retire. I'm gonna man one of the recycling outposts and, um. Police the, uh, the articles that are put in there. So I'm kinda looking forward to that.
I waited to retire, Lauren, I need to start. You have free time, right?
Yeah, I, I may just start doing, uh, uh, recycling gendarm. I like that. I'll get a, I'll get a uniform and everything.
All right. So any other questions for Ms. Francine? All right.
Before we close then, just how do you want to proceed at this point? Do you want to do some polling of your community and give that back to me? Um, how, how would you like to proceed? Or do you want me to go and say to Derek, we've kind of got the basic criteria. It has to be simple, uh, economically viable. You know, uh, and voluntary, how much would it cost? How, how do you want to do this so that we keep moving this forward?
Councilmembers, what's your thoughts?
I guess I'd like to see the costs of what, what it would be to just do cardboard. And cans, and I think steel cans are pretty recyclable as well generally, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So I guess I'd like to see that very simple, very straightforward, you know, if it's, if it's a pop can or a steel can. Or it's cardboard, that's pretty straightforward. And, uh, I think, uh, I'd like to see, you know, what we would need to make that viable to have. Someone pick that up. And I think we'd also need to poll our, our citizens to see. Um, now, is this something you're interested in? What would you be willing to pay for it? You know, give some various tiers. So I think there's something to do on both of our ends, but I think it'd be great if we could get a proposal for, uh. And, and see some of the numbers for picking up cans and cardboard, um. And, uh, to a pilot program that, uh, makes sense, that doesn't break the bank for anyone. Um, and just proceed from there.
So Rebecca, if we had like just a couple, I don't, you know, if we had like two or three stations around College Place or one station. Probably not a lot of additional staff or trucks or whatnot to go by and pick it up. I don't know, you know, maybe, um. Or that's something the guys could do while they're doing other things or something. I don't know, you know. I know they go around town and pick up large items and stuff. I mean, that's kind of a, a financial proposal based on that where, how, how does that look if we do that over a few months and say, um. You know, you're, we're, we're losing our shirts on this thing or we're doing okay on the cardboard and, you know, central locations. I, I. I, I think it's gonna be hard pressed to make this thing financially work if they're driving a truck around town, you know.
So if you want to go with the central locations, we would need to know who you have that would host it. And I, I think Councilmember Selby had it right on the nose. Somebody has to kind of be policing it and making sure people aren't just leaving trash. By the side, um. And, and of course, when you start something like this up, you never know quite how often you need to show up to pick it up. So it might be we schedule. Twice a week and it needs to be three times a week. That's what we found in Nisa. We need to be there Thursday.
Sure. And then Rebecca, we're gonna need feedback from you because this thing could just flop, right? After two, after two or three months, you're saying, hey, since guys cost you a thousand dollars a day or something, I don't know. Or you come back and say, look, it's, we don't know right now, you know, we do a survey monkey, we could do all this stuff, but. I think we could try these central locations perhaps, collect the cardboard. Come back and say we're breaking even. Great, let's do it. What's the next step? You know what I mean? Um, if you're saying there's still a demand for that. And that way it's just not. Nobody's spending a lot of money on stuff or whatnot, but we come back and say, hey, it's working. People are engaged with it, you know, but, uh, I agree, we're. The policing of it, that's gonna be fun, you know, we'll, we'll have to, you know, um. Maybe on our, our, and we can find some locations. Maybe it's at City Hall, maybe it's, I don't know, Wall University, I don't know, something, but yeah.
Boy, I was thinking you suggested the park and we're suggesting that in Pasco as well because you have the parks crew that go by. On a fairly regular basis and, you know, if they just see something, they can pick it up. Um, something that doesn't put a lot of more work on someone's plate, but it's constantly being watched.
Yeah.
I mean, what, oh, I was gonna say with the central bins, one option would be where we have existing camera units. They out, which would be the three parks and then municipal campus. So just to put it out there, we do have those, uh, camera systems. They exist at Kiwanis Lions and, uh, Veterans Park.
I, I like, um, Lauren's idea of kind of a stepwise thing because I was gonna say. I think we really need to get input from our citizens, but I think we need to have at least. Really rough sorts of cost estimates before we can really start asking them questions. Um. And I do think that we really ought to think about, or we really ought to work on, uh. Coordinating with Walla Walla University because, um. The amount of cardboard that comes out of there is, you know, is a huge amount. And so. And they are sort of hit and miss on whether they actually take it to the recycle place, but I think if we could work with them and say, hey, you know. This is how we're gonna do it, um. And they have a truck, so you know, maybe they can help with the short distance hauling. I don't know. Um, but so there's a lot of different ways that I think that it would be important to work with the university. And Mike, I, I think you have a good point, putting them where, near where we already have camera, basically where we already have cameras makes sense.
Oh, that's one thing I forgot to tell you. Um, we have people, there is no oil collected at any of our sites. There are big signs that say there will be no oil, do not leave your oil. And we have oil frequently left, um. So that, that is a potential problem that people leave there when they change the oil in their cars. But you don't have it set up yet and they used to collect oil in Franklin County. So since you're starting fresh, maybe that habit hasn't been established.
All right. Any other questions, comments? It certainly is a heavy conversation and so many facets to be thinking about.
I so appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I'll, I'll go back and talk to Derek and see if we can put some proposals together and then you could take those to your community. And see where they want to go if that works for you.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Got our marching orders.
Such a pleasure to visit with you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Okay, goodbye.
Right, bye-bye. Oh goodness. Okay, let's see, snow and ice policy update. Mr. McAndrews, you are up and.
Good evening, council. Um. So yeah, I wanted to kind of just go over, I, I've been working a little bit on putting together. A proposed new snow and ice, uh, control policy. So. The previous one was created in two thousand and six, um. There's quite a few things that really don't seem, doesn't sound like we're working great for the community. So I took, uh. Took a little bit, made a few changes, a few additions. And, uh, they're both, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read through them. Um, I kind of put together some bullet points that are kind of some of the key differences. So I guess I'll go through that. Um. So really, in the introduction, I added a paragraph that just kind of talks about the unpredictability of weather. Um, in the area and, you know, that kind of states that. Snow response is gonna vary accordingly. Um, then I added in the decision crit- criteria for, you know, snow and ice control operations. Um, and they always talked about snow accumulation and drifting and icing to this icy conditions. Um, time when the snow falls in relationship to essentially rush hour. Um, so I added in, you know, staffing and budget, which are always gonna be deciding factors in just about anything we do. Um, then we touched on the, you know, the main responsibility. Is, you know, regardless of each. Regardless of road conditions, each driver must decide if he or she is capable of driving before they do so. Just kind of the blanket statement that, hey. You know, whatever, we're gonna do what we can, but. People need to know what they're doing, uh, or feel comfortable with what they're doing. Um, then I, I specified that snow is really only gonna be plowed to this, uh, to the side of the road. We won't do to the, the center of the road except for in extreme circumstances. Um. Sorry, I'm trying to look at my notes here. Um. So yeah, but, you know, when we plow in the middle of the road, it creates a hazard for people and vehicles. And then it starts, typically starts to melt. Flows back over the road surface and then as temperatures come back down, it refreezes and you just have ice. So, um, we really want to avoid that. Uh, then we talked about the priorities and how we, you know, how we prioritize roads that we're gonna do. The old, the old. Policy listed out specific roads, which really was kind of confusing and. Wasn't necessarily followed from what I understood. So I broke it down into three priorities. So this is priority one, priority two, and priority three roads. And routes, I guess. Um, and the priority ones are, are essentially the main roads that. That the vehicles travel through the city that are gonna get people, um. You know, I guess the major travel roads, arterials, federally classified roads, things like that. Then the priority twos are. Are roads that will get people in and out of neighborhoods. So, you know, if you got a hill and you're gonna have a hard time getting out of your neighborhood. Unless the road's cleared, it still might be a residential road, but that's kind of our priority two. Um. And then all other roads are priority three. So. The way we, we broke it down was we're gonna hit the priority one roads, get one lane open each way. Then move on and get priority two roads, one lane open and then go back and widen those so that the roads are clear. And only after that, things have been widened will we move into priority three roads. Um. And then we talk about work schedule, um. And I kind of broke down reasons why we might split into multiple shifts, breaking into two shifts, whether that's ten hour shifts or twelve hour shifts. Um, but trying to get the coverage to keep snow operations going if it keeps snowing or we have more weather coming. Uh. Then. I added a little clause in there about the safety of the crews and that, that's important. So if we're, if things really hazardous. We might have to pull people off until it's safe to resume operations. I don't want to have my operators out there in a dangerous situation. Might just have to set things aside for an hour or two if, if things. Work out that way. Um, then callouts. So. Historically, callouts or the old policy stated that, you know, callouts came after ten, we'd wait until about four AM to respond. I don't think that's the right way to it, to handle those. So, um, my, my new draft policy says, you know, will. Employees called out, he should respond to assess this, assess the situation, then he or she might. Then he or she might, you know, handle it, they might decide we need more people, they might decide, hey, this can wait, be better suited if we come back in before. Traffic picks up in the morning. Um, but regardless, I'd like people to get in and get their eyes on it, not just pick up the phone and go, it's ten thirty. We'll deal with this at four AM, so. Um, then I added a few sections, kind of breaking down the the standards and expectations, so. You know, that we're gonna pay attention to crew or to the weather and, you know, react proactively. That, you know, going back into will clear a single lane and then move on. Uh, that we're not gonna do private driveways and or private roads and driveways. That we're not gonna shovel sidewalks and sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent residents, which is. Pretty much the standard for how that's typically handled. And then. Uh, just the kind of the clause in there for my staff to keep their supervisor updated, so nobody gets sent out and then, you know, I don't hear from them for an entire shift. And wonder where they're at. Then I, what else did I add? Uh, talked about city facilities. Um, so historically, we've done this, but it wasn't really spelled out. You know, we go handle the fire station, police station, city hall, wastewater treatment plant, um, kind of. Do what we can to keep. Operations going, especially emergency operations. And then uh. Talked about. Snow removal, so I know in the past and and this still may end up being the case, but I really don't like the idea of. You know, picking up snow with a loader, loading it in a. Dump truck and hauling it off somewhere that gets really expensive, depending on where you put it. It can cause environmental problems, so. You know, I I left that in there as an option, but explained why it's really not a desirable situation. And then kind of reiterated what was already existing about driveway clearing, you know, we're gonna do what we can. I mean, nobody want, none of my operators are gonna want to plow in somebody's driveway, but just the nature of that operations is you're pushing snow to the side. We try to carry it past driveways and roads, but inevitably there's usually gonna be a little bit left there. And reiterated that it's, you know, the property owner's responsibility, make sure their driveway is clear, so. Um, those are kind of the big changes, if you will. And then I included some maps. It's really two of the same map, just one of them. Shows just within the city boundaries. And one of them kind of shows the surrounding roads. I think depending on what you're looking at or who you are, one of them looks clearer than the other. So yeah, that kind of breaks it down with the ones being priority, priority one, or sorry, the reds being priority ones. The oranges being priority twos. This breaks down, you know, the blue streets on this map are all the private roads that. In the city that we're not going to touch, they're somebody else's responsibility. And then the priority threes are the rest of the roads that are left on here. And then the the yellow, kind of yellowish green color is the city limits. So um, I guess all of that being said, I wanted to kind of get some feedback. From you, council, on your thoughts, if you had. Input on. If you like it, if you don't like it, if you have input on things that you'd like to see changed or done differently. My goal is to hopefully update this and get it. Um, the policy, I'd like to keep the policy separate from the maps. From my experience, the maps. Um, the routes themselves, having the ability to keep them a little bit more fluid, depending on, on a. You know, what kind of snow or what kind of winter weather we have. It 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 can be problematic if that's laid out there and this is the exact route that we handle, so. Um, but yeah, I'd like to get this back for approval with you guys shortly, if that's doable, so. I guess I'll leave it to you if you have any questions.
Let's go for questions or comments. Councilmember Cleveland.
Uh, nothing particularly specific. I really appreciate the effort that you put in to try to kind of streamline our policy and keep things uh. Running efficiently. I guess I'll look forward to hearing how this all works out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Robert, looks great. It's nice. I like your proactive um stance on this and um. Accountability and and whatnot. So um, yeah, and the map is great too. I think. A lot of times citizens uh, wonder, you know, is there a rhyme or reason, or is it just, this street looks great, let's try this, you know, or. So um, yeah, no, great work, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salvi.
Think you're muted.
You're on mute. Okay, I'm gonna go on to Heather and then I'll come back to you. Or are you ready? Okay, Councilmember Sherman.
I don't have any questions. I think the new policy looks great. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyle.
No question. Looks good. Thanks.
Thank you.
She's got some technical problems going on. Well, Robert, she works on that. I have a question.
Yeah.
So one of the comments I often hear from um, citizens is that when we plow. Sometimes with the snow banks that we read are like blocking people's driveways. Uh, and I looked at the policy and it doesn't address that, which is fine. It doesn't need to, uh, because we don't need to go that deep, but. Uh, just something to think about because that's one of the comments I often hear is that it blocks their driveways.
Yeah, so so I've ran snow and ice crews at several other places that I've worked before and. I I will tell you, I've been to seminars and on snow and ice and public works seminars and it's it's a. Problem or a concern, if you will, across the board, no matter where you go. The nature of snow plowing operations. You typically are pushing snow to the right side of the road. There's gonna be driveways, it leaves a window of snow and. He, I mean, most municipalities, counties, the state. Their priority is to get the roads open, safe, passable for people to get throughout town. So sometimes that means. That. People have to find their way out of their neighborhood to get to a road that's clear. Sometimes that means, and until crews can get there. Um, there are cities that just don't do neighborhoods, um, but I'm not proposing that. Um, and sometimes that means that there, you know, people shovel their driveway out and then the snowplow comes through. And it leaves a little window of snow or in some cases a bigger window of snow in front of their driveway, but the reality is. We can't just stop and clear every driveway or we would never get the roads clear, so it's it's. In order to do that or in order to focus on driveways, then the main roads through town. Don't get cleared or it takes forever for them to get cleared. And I don't feel that we're providing the best. The best. Services to the citizens at that point. So I I will commit that we will do what we can. Um, it's just.
It's not purposeful. Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Robert, your grader has a, it has a um. Just lost the word. It's got a, it's got a gate on the end of the.
Correct.
Right. So it's not just, the assumption is not, we, and I've seen it, you guys are great. It's not that you just plow through at driveways, it drops and tries to clear the driveway as it goes by, doesn't it?
Yes, we do. And and the graders. Graders are great and on bigger roads. Um, I I I'm anxious to see how our new grader works. I think it will be fantastic. Um, from. From my experience. You can be moved quicker and be more efficient with a with a truck and a plow and um. I haven't seen a gate on those before. I used to run plows. Myself and I always, you know, would straighten my blade out when I go by driveways or intersections. And if you're careful, you're not going too fast. You're not pushing too much snow. You can carry a bulk of it past the driveway. So I I I mean, I intend to go over that with my staff and work on that as well, but. Um, when you go out there with a grader and you're dropping the gate and spending a bunch of time on each driveway, it does slow you down a little bit. But we do have that capability and we do what we can for sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right, Ms. Salvi.
I apologize, I could not get it unmuted, but I seem to have fixed that, so. Um, a couple of comments and a question. Um, first. I really appreciate that you're doing this and I think this is great. Um. And when you were talking about how people have to get out of their neighborhoods or and so forth, I think. It kind of encapsulates the way that in a. It's not really an emergency, I guess. Well, I guess it kind of is, but something where like a snowstorm. Is a time when the community all needs to come together and help each other. And um, it can't just be all on the city crews. So um, I have had some people really, really complaining to me and. I would really love to show this to them. I mean, I will show this to them, but I would also love to be able to say, okay, you have until such and such a time to make comment. And I'm not sure what the next process is. Is is the city council going to officially adopt the policy?
That was my hope. My intent was to get this. Um, I know this is kind of the first time you guys are seeing this, but my hope was to get this. Um, in front of you today and then. Um, to you guys in very near future for approval on the policy. Now, this is my first winter at City College Place with my crews and my equipment that we have currently. The reality is I may look at this after our first or second winter storm that we have and say, yeah, you know, that didn't quite work. Um, and we may be looking at this again next year for revision. Um, in, I mean, my hope is not, my hope is, yeah, this worked great and everything's perfect. And you know, onward and upward, but um, yeah, I was looking for the policy itself to to get approved. Um, like I said, the maps, I'd like to keep. A little bit more fluidity with that, I guess, and the ability to say, okay, uh, the snow is not so bad over here. I don't want it so. Anybody feels so locked in that this is what exactly what we're doing, but. This is the plan, kind of thing.
Yeah, I I completely agree that the maps should be. At your discretion to update rather than having to come through the council. Um, I would. I would think about adding to the very beginning of it, something about. When this kind of thing happens, everyone has to work together. The city. Will do what they, you know, can within our. Resources, but. Uh, we have to prioritize.
Okay, no, I think that's great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause I was really kind of appalled at some of the people who were like, you know. Well, I drove through here and a piece came off my car and I wanted to know who's gonna pay for it and. I was very nice. I didn't just say you, but. Yeah, they just, they seem to think that the city should be able to just make all of their, all of the road completely clear immediately. And that's just not gonna happen.
Well, it maybe it'll make you feel better, maybe not, but it's not, that's not unique to here. That's anywhere. Somebody, you know, a plow operator stopped to help me get out of a ditch. And they turned on the sand and now there's. Paint chips or my windshield got a chip and I want you to pay for it. And it's like, well. We tried to help you and how do you prove that that was us and that wasn't preexisting? So I mean, I've seen, I've seen and heard all sorts of stuff, so. It just goes with the territory, unfortunately.
Yeah, it does, but.
But I like your statement. I I think that's a good idea to add something about working together and that we'll do our best, but. Um, we need everybody's help, kind of thing, something along those lines.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Robert, two more things. First, I need to apologize and make a correction. You did address driveway clearings in your policy.
I did, yes.
So I see it in there now. It's number ten, so I apologize. I apologize for not. Going that far into.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Thank you.
It is clear, it is clear in there. Uh, so my second question is speaking of throwing down sand, I don't see that addressed in the policy. Is there anything that needs to be? Um, you know, when we throw down sand or what type of sand we throw or salt or anything like that, or is that getting too much in the weeds?
I thought about that. Um, I'm open to to your guys' opinion on that. We. Historically have ran um, a mixture of sand and salt. We have salt in big, I call them media bags, big, I think about. It might be a thousand or two thousand pound totes of, or sorry, of salt. Um, and we add that salt to the sand, mix it in. And when you put it down, the sand tends to give. Uh, traction and the salt tends to help melt. It's salt also helps the sand from, it keeps it from freezing. Um, because that's another issue you have. Sand gets some big blocks and clumps and it doesn't come out of the equipment or it's hard to load. So I I didn't address it in here because, hey, I wanted to see how it goes this year. Um, I've worked places where we ran straight salt, I've worked places where we ran straight sand, I've worked places where we're in. You know, a very specific three percent salt mixture in the sand. And depending on the area and depending on. What you're treating, different things work different ways. Right now. Our only ability, until we get our new stellar truck, which will have a plow as well. Um, and it's on order, but until that gets here, our only ability to spread sand or salt. Or a combination is on one truck that doesn't have a plow on it, so it's really running around hitting hotspots. Um, I don't foresee that being. The way of the future, so I didn't really want to spell out how we would address it now. Um, ultimately, in my perfect world, down the road, as we're replacing equipment, our dump trucks would get plows and Sanders. And as we're going around pushing snow, plowing snow, we'd also be applying sand and or salt as needed, so. That's kind of why I didn't address it in here because it's still kind of a. Unknown factor, I guess.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so for Robert to know where he stands, do you know, any of the council members see any reason? We could not review this and have an ability to vote for it to our next council meeting? Alright, Robert, I think we we. You know what to do with it.
Alright, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, let's see next. Chief Tamaris is gonna discuss accepting a justice grant and. Participation in the Walla Walla Regional Drug Task Force. It's another big discussion.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Council, appreciate the time. Um, so the Walla Police Department applied for a federally funded justice assistance grant. Um, that is distributed, it's a federal grant distributed through Washington's Department of Commerce. It is to establish a drug task force in Walla Walla County. It'd be the first task force. Uh, ever established here. And the new task force would join in already sixteen established task forces across the state of Washington. Uh, in the funding, we'd specifically fund one full-time detective position for the College Place Police Department to participate in the task force. The primary uh, focus for the task force is mid-upper level criminal organizations. A secondary focus would be. Largely based on what the board, there'll be an established board that will oversee the task force. So largely what the board is asking for, um, but they will also include assisting other law enforcement agencies. We can do local homicide investigations, warrant service, fugitive apprehension. Uh, we can go after, after, a percentage of our time after sex trafficking, uh, gangs and other criminal organization or organized crime. Um, the expected outcome is obviously to investigate and disrupt or dismantle uh, drug and gang organizations in the Walla Walla area. Um, maybe leveraging our resources through the task force, partnering with local, state and federal partners. Depending on the size of the arrest, it could be prosecuted federally or um, at the state level. Uh, majority of it's at the superior court level, so a lot of the funding would come from the state. The task force was awarded as effective November first of two thousand twenty-one, so the funding's actually available now. Um, they're hoping to get started as soon as possible. This is kind of those double-edged sword kind of things because we really need a backfell position, but we can't backfill a position until we fill the detective spot and start claiming. Uh, the grant position. Um, another, uh, part of that is, we, um, in order to get full funding for Walla Walla County, at least three agencies have to commit to it. Walla Walla Sheriff's Office, Walla Walla Police Department, and the College Place Police Department all have to commit one full-time employee to the task force. Um, without that, they will not get 100% funding. Um, the, uh, reimbursement is roughly $80,000 a year for a step-five employee. Um, their reimbursement would be, uh, either established monthly or quarterly, um, and that's whatever the, our local agreement establishes. Uh, the cost to the city is benefits, uh, the grant does not cover benefits, and that's roughly $30,000 for the employee. Uh, training's covered by the task force. Um, another thing that's not covered by the grant is, uh, equipment. Um, and where that comes into play is backfilling the employee of the new, uh, with the new employee. So, it's about $2,500 for, um, equipping a new officer. It's about another $4,300 to send a new officer to the academy, and that's our, 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 our share. Uh, the majority of that money is covered by the state. The other thing that we would have to, uh, provide is a vehicle. Um, we're not talking about a shiny, brand-new vehicle. Generally, they, uh, use, use vehicles that blend into the community a little bit better. So, um, the sheriff's office, uh, the county commissioners have already approved it for the sheriff's office, city of Walla Walla's councils approved it for them. We're kind of the third one waiting to see where we're gonna go with this. Highly recommend it. I think it's a well-needed, uh, resource for our community, and I think it'd be really good to help go after the mid-to-high-level organized crime in our community. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Tomaros. Let's start with Councilmember Cleveland.
No questions at this time, thanks for the presentation.
Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, no, no questions, thank you. I fully support it, yes.
Councilmember Selby?
Um, I fully support this. Do you have any intelligence on whether, um, the, well, no, wait, I take that back. It does say that they, the other two have already agreed.
Yes, yes, they have.
So, yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Sherman?
Um, I also think this is a good idea, um, but what happens to them if we don't? Like, are there other agencies that could be part of it too? Just hypothetically.
Certainly, it's a great question, and they've, uh, they've opened it up to Columbia County as well. Um, and from what I understand, they have not yet committed to it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Boyle?
I don't have any questions, but I think this is a really great idea.
So, one of the questions I asked Chief Tomaros when we first talked about this was, what happens after year one? Um, we hire this detective or this, yeah, for the task force, and the grant money for the $80,000 for salaries and training is, is done and gone, and then we have now, um, an employee that's gonna probably be about 100 and... What did you say?
10,000.
$10,000 a year plus. So, that's something that needs to be thought about, is... I think this is very important. I, it's undeniable that we need this. I just worry that if we hire one, and then what are we gonna do after that? I would be, feel horrible if after year one, we let them go, right? Cause we can't financially afford to support it.
Right, so, a couple of things to, um, historically, when these grants come forward, especially establishing a new task force to a region such as ours, they historically have funded 100% for two to three years. Um, after that, you go into the grant pool with, it would be the 17, uh, task forces across the state, and then there's equal sharing across those task forces. So, we would still get funding, uh, we'd still have a percentage of funding, but what that percentage is, I don't know what that would be. So, um, I feel pretty confident that over the next three years, we'd be funded. Um, but, and hopefully, we would be moving and progressing as a, a city, and we can start planning for that, um, what that might look like. But that is certainly, Mayor, a, a possibility. I can't deny that.
So, the, what it really comes down to is the consideration if the city willing and able to put in a new position into the police department, um, and commit to that. Uh, Ms. Sherman, has her hand raised?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to ask her if it really is a question, cause is there, um, I know I talked with, um, Troy and Lieutenant Benfield earlier about, um, other sources of revenue for this, and we, we talked about that briefly, and Troy, I don't know if that was any sort of significant help, but that might address some of this.
Well, certainly, as the task force is getting established, there are seizures that do often occur with, uh, arrests, and some of that money, uh, depending on what the established board, um, approves, but if some of that money could be used, uh, for, for staffing, for funding. Um, you know, this has all happened really fast, uh, I'll admit, but I think, uh, I feel pretty good about where we're at. It's being managed, uh, right now by the Walla Walla Police Department, and, um, they're, they're going to assume a lot of these costs that won't affect the grant, uh, like housing and clerical, um, just because they see the, the need for this in our community. Now, there's risk, obviously, with ongoing, uh, grant funding, but I think it's really a risk that we have to take to address some of the mid and high-level organized crimes in our community.
Sean, would you know, on a HR perspective, um, what, if there's any, any additional sure, insurance or any liability risk getting this deep into organized, you know, the deeper criminal investigations, um, that the city would be put in?
Um, well, I can't estimate what the risk would be, but it's not gonna change our, the cost of our insurance, um, to add another employee.
Even if it's a different type of position, so it doesn't matter what they're doing?
I mean, I would say that they're just like the rest of our, I mean, police officers. Am I wrong, Troy? I mean...
No, no, I don't think you're wrong at all. We're gonna properly train the, uh, employee, and, and there are, um, steps in place to protect our employees for bite-knock more they can chew, and, and we will have, and that obviously has a lot to do with accountability and leadership, and I'm very, I'm very confident in the leadership that the Walla Walla Police Department has put into place, um, to ensure that those extra liabilities don't exist. Obviously, the nature of what we do in law enforcement, there's a lot of liability in that, but I don't think it's gonna add any more liability than what we're already doing.
All right, Councilmember Peterson?
You know, Chief, I was thinking about adding another, another person, but I think it's, um, I'm sure the way your staff is, this would be an integrated, uh, fellow, um, police officer. I'm guessing there's gonna be shared services or shared responsibilities at some point even. In other words, I could see maybe a reduction, uh, you know, and I know they, they're gonna have a defined role and, and, and whatnot, that'll be different, but I'm guessing this could even be, uh, maybe a reduction in overtime, uh, covering some stopgap sometime. I don't know how, how you might be able to use this person, not, not as a, you know, um, how do I say this tactfully, but, but it, 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 it augments for your staff, or perhaps you're not short, short-staffed at some time. Is that a honest, Stephen?
Well, this does not address our short-staff issue, which we clearly have. Um, but this is a way to fund a position that we wouldn't, that we don't really have funding for. I mean, it's $80,000 towards an FTE is a pretty significant grant. So, um, we would not be able to use the employee at, like we do with the school resource officer in summertime. We wouldn't be able to use this employee in uniform. Um, this employee would be, um, someone who wears plain clothes, uh, they're in investigative work, and, um, definitely not something we wanna intermingle with patrol.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Sherman?
Um, so Lauren's talking about shared costs, and I agree with that. What about, um, or shared salary, whatever? What about office costs? Like, if they're going to be working in another office, are we gonna have to contribute toward expenses there?
Now, the, great question. Those, uh, those are part of the grant, they cover that. Um, for now, we have Walla Walla PDs assuming those responsibilities and those costs. Um, uh, we're fortunate to have that resource right now. So, as the task force grows, or if it grows in the future, and we have to move locations, there may be a future cost, but that will be included in their lineup budget, uh, within the grant.
Okay, thanks.
And there, and I will say this, even though the grant does cover overtime, if we do not get additional agencies involved, for instance, we, uh, part of that is to invite the state patrol, but they have, or they're, have over 200 vacancies right now, so they cannot contribute, uh, a trooper, detective to that position. So, there will be some additional funding resources that may be able to cover some of the overtime. Some of that stuff has to still be established. Um, but I'm giving you the, uh, I don't wanna say worst-case scenario, but it is basically bottom-line scenario.
So, this is not like, and excuse the ignorance, I don't know how it works in the police, um, field, but it's not considered a salary position? You know, so there is, there are possibility of overtime and double time.
No, they, they're, they're entitled to getting overtime, absolutely.
They're entitled to get overtime, okay, okay. Mr. Cleveland?
So, are the other agencies that are part of this task force, they're adding, they would be adding an, an employee as well? Or is it, uh, how is that working exactly?
Yes, so, well, I guess it's up to the individual agencies that they want to maintain their, uh, FTE count the way it is, or to add, it depends on how they're funded, uh, with internally, but, uh, um, from what I understand, they're each at, adding an extra FTE.
Okay, um, I don't suppose they have any creative revenue sources that they're using? Or are they kind of paying from that, just from the general fund?
Yeah, that, I'm unaware of any, uh, if there are. Um, you know, they, they are also, uh, up against, um, some staffing issues, just like the rest of us are across the state. Um, you know, we're down two FTEs right now, and, uh, we, we're, we're in the process of integrating backfill, and Walla Walla Police Department's in the same situation. They, they are backfilling positions, and so is the sheriff's office. So, this is something that we're trying to prioritize, because we know it's a problem in our community, and it's the best thing to support our community. Um, but at the same time, we're still struggling to find qualified applicants and qualified, um, officers to fill these positions.
Yeah, um, has, um, has, has Brian had the, been able to, have you, have you talked with Brian about, like, revenue sources for maintaining a, uh, or just, just what would it look like to try to ma- bring on a whole new employee? Yeah, in terms of our budget, our yearly budget?
Well, it is in, uh, my budget proposal to add, uh, some more FTEs to the, the department. Um, whether that will come through fruition or not, I'm, I'm unaware. But, uh, this is one, this is exactly why we wanna move forward on this, because this does, um, pay 75% of our salary, or 70% of the salary. So, um, this is one way a city can add a resource to our community at a very low expense.
Gets a jumpstart, so to speak.
It's a jumpstart, absolutely. It's, but it's something that we have to plan for, as the mayor talked about. In the future, we're going to have to commit greater financial, uh, commitment towards this position. Um, but it'll always have some percentage of funding. Um, and, uh, now, there's benchmarks you have to meet. You have to, um, be productive, and if you aren't meeting those productive benchmarks, then the task force could totally go away. Um, I'm not concerned about it. I think that there, oh, I know that there's plenty of opportunities to work out there for this task force, and that's why we were able to articulate the need for it. Um, so, definitely think it's gonna make a difference in our community. It takes time for it to get up to speed, though. I'm guessing, cause you have to train the officers, you have to, um, they have to start working on cases. These cases are typically long-term cases, they take time. So, I'm, I'm guessing it'll take, uh, over a year for them to be productive and get up to speed.
Thanks.
And, um, you were talking about staffing shortages and struggling to hire. What do you think, how do you think? What do you think about how it's gonna be to fill this specific position? Cause do they need to have some kind of special skill, or are we gonna train them from the bottom up? How is that gonna be?
So, it typically happens is, so, once the position's approved, um, we'll be able, and we, we, we've already reached out to the unions for any demand or bargain issues that might arise. Once that's established and approved, we'll interview, we'll open it up to our officers and interview. Um, and we have a lot of interest, as you can imagine, uh, from, from the officers. Uh, once an officer is selected, they will, uh, they will attend training that, such as Drug Enforcement Administration puts on a DEA Basic, they will attend that. They will attend, uh, Detective Basic, um, and meet those career-level certifications for the position of detective, and ensure that they're trained to, um, to be able to function, do the job that we're asking them to do. So, yeah, and then, uh, but that also comes with a lot of supervision. You'll have a task force supervisor that will oversee them. They'll be our employee, but they'll be working in the task force. We'll still have to do their evaluations and, and provide training and equipment, and get all those other things that we do with a normal employee. Um, but the benefit also, I mean, if, if there's an issue in College Place, the task force will focus on that. And so, you're, it's, you're, it's, you're getting a lot of, uh, a lot of enforcement through a commitment of one FTE.
Okay, so it's unlikely that we're gonna hire somebody who's already been a detective in, in drug investigation?
That's not gonna happen. It's gonna be, it's gonna be one of our officers that are currently here. The, the, uh, the backfill will, could either be a lateral officer or a new hire. Um, and those individuals will, uh, either, um, come from another department and work for us, uh, like we have right now, uh, go through, uh, their coaching trip, or we, we hire a new hire, and they go through the academy. So, and new hires right now, the academy is six months out, um, as a result of, uh, all the dismissals with the, uh, the, the mandates across the state. Um, so, the academy went from a, a month, uh, waitlist to six-month waitlist.
Ms. Foil?
So, if we're having trouble hiring and filling spaces, I guess my only concern about this program is if we find the right person, whether we're promoting a, a current officer into this detective position, or how, how are we gonna find another suitable body if we're already having trouble filling our spots?
Well, we don't know. I mean, now, we're pretty hopeful. We have tomorrow is, last week, we did lateral officer interviews, and, um, I'm hoping that we have someone that we can, um, pull out of that group. We'll find out Thursday when they do the civil service board and establish that list. And then, of course, there's still the, the whole background, um, polygraph. I mean, there's a whole process they have to go through before we can hire them, right? So, and then, starting tomorrow, we'll be doing entry-level interviews for new applicants. So, um, yeah, it's a struggle to, uh, find, uh, bodies, but I'm pretty good at recruiting and finding good employees, and I'm, I'm confident that I can backfill the positions. It's just a lot of work, and it takes time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chief Tomaros, I have one more question, and hopefully I'll stop.
No, this is great.
Because as, as you're talking, it's making me think about things. Okay, so we, we have one of our officers move into this new position, and you talked about the time for them, would they need to be going to an academy or any kind of training? Because is it gonna take a year before they're up and running? So, by the time they're really getting to the job, the grant funding's gone?
So, you're talking about the detective position, or?
Yes, the detective position, yes.
No, so, the detective position, once we, uh, interview and, and establish the position, they would begin with some on-the-job training, they would, uh, and then they would, you know, as far as, uh, when the next available detective courses, or when the next available DEA basic courses, we would get them to that required training and, uh, get them up to speed as, as possible. A, a lot of us will be working alongside a regional task force nearby, such as Tri-Cities, to do some on-the-job training, um, getting them up to speed. And, uh, yeah, so that's, that's gonna happen pretty quick. But, once they're in place with the training, and then you're establishing, uh, informants, contacts, um, following up on leads and trying to get those cases going. And then generally, those high-level, mid, mid-to-high-level cases generally take time.
Councilmember Selby?
I just wanted to say, uh, Chief Tomaros, that I really appreciate you making sure that you have opportunities for staff to advance from within. I think that's really important in retention. So, I appreciate that, and, um... And, um, I kind of come from a background where sometimes you live for a long time on grant funding year to year. So I think this is a great, uh, step towards, um, towards, uh, setting up a good future. And I'm not as concerned about the grant funding nature of it.
You know, the State Fusion Center has been running on a year-to-year grant for over 20 years. They never know if they're going to be funded the next year. And it would be sad if they weren't because it's such a great resource to our state. Um, but absolutely, um.
Between you and Mike, I have no worries.
Mike, Mike is definitely good at that, that's for sure. I'll give him that credit.
All right, uh, I promised any other questions or comments? All right, I don't see any. Thank you so much, Chief Tomars. Oh, wait, next steps, what do you need from us?
Next week, uh, you'll have an opportunity to approve it. And then, once that's done, um, we will move forward with Walla Walla Police Department and the Sheriff's Office to establish an interlocal agreement. There is already work being done to establish that. Um, and, uh, from there, they will be working towards, uh, developing a board. And, um, there's a couple of different boards. There'll be an oversight board and then there'll be a board of chiefs and sheriffs. So there's, there's multiple layers that will have oversight over this task force. And then, um, and of course, I will be providing reports, um, annually to, uh, to you and the council.
Okay, um, thank you, thank you. So, um, council, we have one week to think about it. We are going to be discussing next, I believe, the, you, ambulance utility. And at this time, we are still unsure, some people think about, we're unsure where that's going to go, or that funding approval, or the utility tax. And we did discuss committing to, um, hiring and, um, taking the cost for a year or so, we had to, until the utility tax kicked in. So this, um, when you, when we go next to the next discussion, I'd like to kind of hear where we're at with that one. So on that note, I'm going to bring up, uh, Mr. Carlton and Chief Winter. He is going to participate to discuss the ambulance utility.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you, uh, may recall, we've, this has been presented to council a number of times and Chief Winter has put forth the, the request for additional staffing to support EMS. Um, I'll share my screen and bring up a few, um, pages. Bear with me, I'm not seeing it. So this is the document that shows, uh, where we currently stand with EMS. And, uh, given the fact that the needed support for the department is required, we're on a shortfall of close to $400, $437,000 in shortfall if we hire these additional, uh, employees. The current expense fund can absorb that for a short period of time, maybe a year, maybe two years. But long-term, it's not feasible to, uh, maintain that additional cost, given our current, uh, revenue structure and, and of course, the support that current expense gives to all the departments. Um, that being said, in the last meeting, we presented, um, this sheet, which showed our, our options for charging a utility tax. Um, after, and we talked about a recommended strategy of using the stormwater account to, um, to base the, the units of who we charge. Now, there is some difficulties with using stormwater as a basis, uh, stormwater utility accounts as a basis. One of the big issues is, is that it, a lot of it is driven off of, uh, permeable surface of properties. So big, uh, um, Walla Walla University and Walmart have big, uh, parking lots. So they have a lot of permeable charges per unit. So if we extrapolate the number of accounts, then, um, they would get hit abnormally high because they have large parking lots. And we determine there's not, not much of a correlation between the size of a parking lot and the occurrence of the, uh, ambulance utility fee. Uh, just to step back a second, of course, the first option is strictly to go on, uh, how many accounts do we have? This presentation was a little light on the number of accounts and it ends up being, I believe, just like 3,100 is the total number of accounts that we service, independent of whether it's water, uh, stormwater or waste, uh, utilities. So, uh, that is similar to a number of jurisdictions that are, uh, charging an ambulance utility. And I gave that to reference document in the packet that you can see the different entities. And a large portion of those use this as a, uh, a method to charge it. It is simple, uh, but yet it doesn't reflect, um, uh, for example, multiple unit apartments, two, fourplex, bigger apartments. It does not impact, uh, large, uh, commercial projects, schools. It, so it'd be one rate every single account, regardless of the type of account. Uh, we, our conclusion was that didn't seem as the, the best practice to charge by burdening everybody with the same rate. So we had come up with using the stormwater units. So, for example, uh, Walmart might have one account, but yet they're charged for multiple stormwater units. So we were using those units as a method of allocating the cost. It does reduce the per-unit charge, but we determined that that wasn't a good basis for, uh, charging it. The third, uh, option we looked at, this is the same as what was provided the last meeting, was basing it on the incident count. And, uh, that also is, uh, is very difficult for us to manage that. None of the jurisdictions that, uh, gave the reading material for are using this form of method. So, uh, because of the complexity and, and how often we'd have to change the charges in the system, we, uh, negated that as a recommended strategy. So here is, uh, here is a sheet showing, uh, what our different numbers of accounts are depending on which utility we're talking about. So right now, we have 3,118 accounts that we can charge. Um, if we used, uh, water as a, as a factor, you can see there's 433 units charged to those 3,118 accounts. Uh, similar, uh, philosophy in, in the sewer, there's 4,481 accounts. And stormwater, there's 5,374. And the reason we use that in the first scenario was try to get the largest unit count. So we reduced that unit charge. So we've taken that information and we brainstormed and determined a recommended strategy that we think helps correct the, uh, the one unit charge for everybody. And that is based on, um, converting everybody to a, a residential equivalent number. So, for example, a single-family residence would be the basis. So they'd be one charge and that would be one unit. And then we drive, everybody else is charged based on an equivalent to that. Multifamily residential is simple, it's based on the number of units. And then we go with the rest of, you can see the customer categories on the left-hand column, referencing commercial, church, schools, public buildings and senior living. And we would drive our unit, equivalent units off the square footage of the buildings. Um, that way, we make it equivalent to a single-family residence as far as size goes. Some entities are using a, um, a similar method, but they're using a factor of, um, number of people per household. So I think the average in Washington State is 2.3 people per single-family residence. We found that that was hard to calculate and how do you determine that for commercial entities? So we didn't pursue that strategy. So you can see in the assumptions, we base the ERU is on an average residential square footage. And through Realtor.com for our, uh, our zip code, it comes up to 1,985 square feet. So we're basically converting all the, everybody's building space down to that, that factor. So if there's, uh, I got an example down below. So Walmart, we pulled their numbers off the county website and they have 205,690 square feet. And then we divided that by the 1,985. So they would be charged 103.62 units. I threw a number in for monthly rate of $6 because as of right now, we have 121 accounts. We need to go through and figure out what the square footage of the building is. Um, so I just threw an example in there to show they would pay 621.73 a month and a yearly charge, just multiplied by 12. You can see for College Place High School, they have 102,000, uh, square footage of building space and that's equivalent to 51 units. So their charge would be 308.58 per month. Brookdale Senior Living Home, there's 67,890, 19 square feet, which is equivalent to 34 residential equivalent units. And you can see they're charged at $205 a month. And then we basically go down and we determine the square footage for everybody in, um, College Place that's ranks in either residential or non-multi-family. So that's sort of the direction we're heading in, uh, in a, in a method of charging out the, the ambulance utility. Uh, we do have a couple unresolved issues that we've determined, uh, how to handle storage units. Um, and how do we charge them? Or if there's vacant lot, lots or parking lots in the parks? So we have some questions that we haven't finalized, but we wanted more to bring this to council, saying this is sort of our recommended strategy of how we would, um, charge out an ambulance utility and we wanted to have conversation with you about that. So this is some of the, uh, charge options. The one, again, is just based on the number of accounts. Uh, it's easy to calculate, it's based on information in Springbrook and similar to other methods used by other cities. It does not account for pro, multiple units. It does not account for commercial, uh, schools, uh, universities, et cetera. Uh, the second one is our, uh, one we just talked about with our ER, sorry, that should be ERU. Um, everybody represented by a single-family residence on the square footage of the property. Um, it's consistent application across, uh, customer categories and it's, uh, charged based on ERU as opposed to number of accounts. So it does charge larger entities, uh, an amount makes it more fair for single-family residents, which are the largest number of accounts. Uh, you know, some of the problems, disadvantages with that system. And, and the first one is it doesn't directly, is not directly associated to whom, whom consume, consumes a service. And it's a little more difficult to calculate. But it, it is a consistent practice, which for us, uh, in the billing department, would allow us for every new commercial or residential, it's easy to apply because it's very, you know, it's pretty basic for us to determine. Uh, the third rate is based on the incident count. It charges customers who incur the use. Um, it's difficult to calculate and calculations need to be changed more frequently. So not a recommended strategy. So that's, uh, sort of where we're at on, on the ambulance utility. And we just wanted to, uh, modify that recommended stormwater account unit basis that we recommended the last time and kind of advanced that and understand that we, there's some disadvantages in the stormwater accounts and trying to alleviate that. Do we, um, do we have any questions? I think I have a couple more. Um, and our recommendation will involve, um, starting in July, in the, in the third quarter of 2022. That way, we'll allow, uh, colleges and the schools and whatnot to get this into their budget, uh, for their next cycle. And then we would also be looking, recommending doing a phased approach where it's, uh, a third of the charge in the first year, uh, two-thirds in the second year and a full charge in the third year. And we'll be looking at bringing this to council for approval in, uh, first meeting in January.
And, uh, I would just add some items too, to this. Uh, first of all, we put out our article about the ambulance utility in the newsletter that was mailed to everyone. So there was a hyperlink to take folks to the, uh, website and peruse the, uh, information. Also, there's been additional outreach on this topic. Both, uh, Chief Winter and, uh, Brian gave a, a good presentation to the Academic Development Commission last night to go over this topic as well, where they have a general understanding of it. And then again, to reiterate what, uh, Brian stated, in looking at the square footage thing, which is, uh, taking additional time to develop, uh, it, it basically irons out a lot of the disparities that were being caused by the, uh, the, uh, permeable surface ERU with the stormwater, where, uh, no system is 100% fuel-proof, but this definitely gets it where it's, uh, fairer. Uh, so that's what we're trying to aim towards and keep in mind, we're trying to get the address from, the addresses from the stormwater database because that truly is only a comprehensive database we have at the city because not every property in the city is in the wastewater, uh, utility accounts. And then likewise with the water, uh, irrigation district, uh, District 14 and Green Tank, uh, between both of them cover about a quarter of our land. So truly, that stormwater address database is the only comprehensive one.
All right, let's.
So if I could just add one thing, and right now, we don't know what that basic unit is for the single-family residence because we need to determine all the units, uh, within all the existing commercial buildings before we can actually determine what that number's going to be. Uh, we have a feeling it's going to be, um, anywhere between $6 and $10 per month, per unit.
All right, Councilmember Cleveland, questions or comments?
Uh, well, first of all, I really appreciate all the thoughtful work and consideration that's going to try to create the most, uh, you know, fairer, uh, billing structure we can come up with. Uh, if we're down the road after this gets implemented, um, how difficult is it to make a dust, additional adjustments? Like if we say, oh, this is a number site, we need to change the, the structure. Is it a matter of essentially just, uh, writing a new ordinance? Or, uh, is it a matter of just updating a document and then?
It would probably go into our fees resolution when we look at the utility rates each year. And our recommendation will be to review the rate every third year. Just as we update the, um, utility models is required every three years. So we do a similar practice.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, boy, this gets more and more complicated. Um, so, you know, there's square footage and then there's number of stormwater accounts. And so, um, under the stormwater accounts, it's like they're being hit too hard. But then, um, square footage is a lot too. Yeah, I, I'll really be interested to hear back from you guys, what a, a single-family dwelling is going to be. Is it going to be a buck 50, you know, after this? Or will it be the $10, you know? I think six to 10 is pretty palatable, um, for most people to add that for 120 bucks a year or less. Um, one question, if that's $7,000 for Walmart amount, is Walla, what's Walla Walla University going to be? 40, 50 grand?
I don't know, we need to, uh, we haven't got that number of what their square footage is going to be. It, it, it'll be larger number, they have a lot of square footage.
Yeah.
Um, just to weigh in there on that, so the square footage there, um, estimated units is 104, but, um, using stormwater, it's doubled, it's 203. So doing it for Walmart, so doing it by using the square footage, it does lessen it for, um, those bigger facilities.
So it's not, yeah, I was trying to make it linear, but it's not, you know, okay, yeah. Um, well, yeah, a single family, it'll be interesting to hear what, uh, Wal-Wal University is. I think we may, we may have to, um, you know, dorms and buildings everywhere. I mean, I don't know, that, what is that? You know, that could be seven or eight Walmarts. I don't know when you start adding everything up. But, uh, anyway, well, we'll, we'll find out when you guys get that, yeah. Thanks. Just one last thing, Mike, Mike, thanks for your comment. I understand, that's a good point. When you have a quarter of the city that may be exempt from this because we're not part of the, yeah, that's a, thank you. That was great information too.
Yeah, and, and to, to add to that, so there'll be the standard exemptions for, um, low income. And, um, we cannot charge, uh, Medicare, Medicaid beds at any of the facilities. So there'll be some adjustment for that.
No comments or questions? Ms. Sherman?
Well, I needed Melody to talk for like five minutes so I could formulate a question. Um, I don't, I don't know. I think I'm, I'm still trying to understand the, like why we wouldn't do option three. I understand your concerns. And I also don't work in your office, so one of, you know, respect what you guys are doing, but I think that would just be my only question is making sure that this is the right way to assess, um, those fees, but I know that I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm just still trying.
Well, just, uh, on the fact that, um, under the third scenario, um, that, that could change rather fre- frequently depending on the incident count.
But would you need to change it monthly, annually?
Well, we never even went down that road because of the burden it places on some of the entities. So we tried to go, and no one else has used that method to determine, and in the Washington state that's doing this is choosing, has chose that method.
Okay.
Mike, can you chime in on that?
Well, yeah, it's true. I mean, that, that was like a Frankenstein monster when we develop.
Do you guys not get excited like spreadsheets like I do?
I, we have way too many of them beyond the swamps, so that's why. Uh, but the thing is no others, no other jurisdiction has that where it's based on the call volume. And then when you map it out, looking back at your year, there's been so much volatility between classes. You can't really draw a linear pattern. So if we were to do it based on that, you would have really violent swings and what essentially who you're charging to what. And then also keep in mind that you do get a lot of calls in the nurseries and stuff. But as we said, those Medicaid beds, you can't like charge against. So then there's like this whole howl of doubt area where even when you're trying to get to the cause of the issue, you're still precluded from getting there. Uh, so that's why it looked like it was better to do it through the stormwater database. But then when you look at how we figure out the ERUs with stormwater, there still is essentially a bias there. Therefore, it seemed like to do a hybrid where you're using the stormwater addresses. But then you're doing it by square footage, as DeShree just alluded to. It definitely tempered down like the increment that Walmart would be charged, which is actually fair. Because when you look at the call volumes, the call volumes were not coming that much out of Walmart. Uh, so, uh, so that's what we were trying to get to.
All right. Thank you for the explanation, Mike. That helps.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyle?
No questions, thanks.
I have a question, um, Chief Winter, and I don't know if you have this at all, so it's just a question. Um, I know you've been tracking the significant increase in call volume. Do we have any tracking of, um, the time between that we're able to address these calls? You know, is it getting longer for us to get to a call as it was a year ago? Do we know any of those numbers?
I don't have those numbers offhand. I know that overlapping calls where we have multiple units out is increasing, but I don't have that. I can certainly get that for you and have it to you tomorrow.
No, that, that's fine. I was just wondering, um, if, you know, because again of the concern of getting this done. I, I wanted to just kind of have by an idea of how urgent it is for us to put this together. Um, Councilmember Peterson?
This real quick point on Wal-Wal University, I just, I'll just throw this out there, just, yeah, whatever it's worth. But it could be you go off of occupied buildings or something like that instead. You were talking about storage areas. And so could, could be that you go off the dorm square footage or something like that, you know, instead of, um, you know, eighty percent of the other buildings that aren't occupied, you know, on a regular basis. So anyway, just, just a thought.
Councilmember Selby?
Um, I think that if we're going to want to say, oh, we're going to go with occupied or whatever, um, I think we need to say, this is our estimate of your bill. If you think it should be less under these circumstances, show us information that shows that, you know, most of these buildings aren't occupied or whatever, you know, make our rules, but we shouldn't have to have the burden of figuring that out. And it should sort of be like the, um, accommodation for ADA is it's not retroactive. So if you think your bill, if, you know, we'll send it to you in advance if you think it's too high. Um, because of, I think we have a, a thing like that in the stormwater thing, but, um, I'm sorry, it's late, I'm rambling, but basically what I want to say is the burden of proof should be on them, not on us.
And there's, there's a hundred and twenty-one accounts that are impacted by that, uh, those other factors besides the residential and apartments. So I mean, I guess we can figure out the amount and then communicate that with, uh, those individuals or those businesses. And say this is what we've determined.
What would be the highest one that they would have to pay? I'm having trouble with the small print. Because I don't know, the whole thing seems like we're working really hard to come up with the fairest way that we can with the data that we have. And, um, I'm not sure it's really worth it to have all these arguments with people.
Well, DeShree, did you have an amount for what, you, we don't know, that while the biggest square footage and we don't know that number yet, could be the university.
Probably.
So right now, the largest other building is Walmart and you could see their square footage and what they would be charged. At a rate of six dollars per month, but that rate.
Yeah, I can't, I can't actually read that, so.
Oh.
But. There you go. No, seven grand, maybe they would wanna.
So, uh, that is our, you know, we think that's better than, you know, is it fair that Walmart pays? So if the rate was per the number of accounts, it's more like twelve dollars a month. So is it, is it fair that Walmart pays twelve dollars or the high school pays twelve dollars a month?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair.
Apartment complexes pay twelve dollars a month. Um, that is the strategy that Wal-Wal is using in their, uh, ambulance utility. Is just straight number of accounts and there's one charge for an account. Which that means the single family residents would take the burden of the charges.
I think you're on the right track. I just don't want to, how you make it too complicated, then have us be running around to get the data, so.
Well, yeah, and so far the data was pretty fast. That information like for Walmart, that's available on the county website. So we just pulled up the address and there it was.
Yeah.
So it's a defendable number and you're right, maybe somebody could debate it and maybe we have a process in place to accommodate that.
Oh, Council, just a quick question for you all. So we, we're talking about these numbers and how the billing is going to be. Are we in agreement that we want, we do want to fund these positions, that we do want to provide additional staff to the fire department? Or is that still up in the air depending on funding the utility tax for you?
I think we should have more.
I'm inclined to agree.
I totally agree.
Okay, okay. Chief Winder, do you have any?
Oh, just kidding.
Go ahead, Heather.
I said I'm on the fence, but I just wanted to see David squirm. I'm good. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm, uh, it's, it's late. That's a bad time to ask that question, uh, Mayor. I mean, I've been very supportive of this, um, but then you gotta wonder if it's going to cost as much, what does it take to unwind it, you know? Um, but I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not talking about doing that, but, um, um, yeah, I, I, you know, we gotta just make it fair. Anything we, anything we do is going to be picked apart. Somebody's going to come back, you know, eighty percent of the runs are being done at nursing homes that aren't going to pay their fair share. And we're going to base it on square footage of Smith Hall, you know, at Wal-Wal University. Uh, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, so we're going to have to really think this thing through and, uh, there will have to be accommodations where no ambulance runs occur at a place, but we're hitting them with forty thousand dollars a year or whatever it is, you know, ten thousand dollars a year. So we'll have, I, I think that's a great process. I think we need to have our, our own service. Um, I do think that there's going to have to be some sort of tamping down of, um, you know, if there is, if there's, if there's a single outlier, Wal-Wal University, we're going to have to do something to tap that down, but anyway, yeah.
Yeah, and you can, you can see Lauren that, uh, Walmart is probably the second biggest structure in College Place and you can see
Right.
what their number would be.
Right, and I, and I think as you guys gain, we'll get better information as we get along and we'll find out if that, everything I just said is incorrect, right? You know, that is.
We'll have all those numbers, uh, ready for the, for the presentation in January.
Okay, alrighty, thanks.
I just wanted us to, you know, see if we can give Chief Winter an idea of he's going to get that some relief or not.
I don't like everyone but Heather, so.
Correct, correct, that's not true.
All right, so lastly, let's move on then, if there's no further discussions or questions on that. Um, Mr. Carlton's going to talk about the twenty twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget.
I gotta go again?
Our favorite conversation. Yeah, I hope you saved your energy.
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe not.
Does everybody see that? So this is the, uh, this is the fourth, uh, iteration of the preliminary budget. It's going to be pretty simple. You've seen this a lot. All the detail is, uh, in the packet. If you want to, in your leisure, go through line item detail. Um, but all, all we're basically going to do is we're going to run through the totals, a little bit of the detail and talk about what's changed since the last iteration. Um, so here's the preliminary budget, uh, you know, really the big number to talk about is this two point two million dollar drawdown. And the reason for the next slide is to show our, our trend in the ending fund balance. And you can see in our forecast, we are, we are showing for twenty twenty-one, a, uh, you know, the largest ever ending fund balance for the city at eighteen million. But to be frank with you, that is, uh, has accumulated funds for a couple of key projects. Um, one is the, uh, Lions Park. Uh, it, and then the water, the water funds are in there as well with money we've already received. So the, the drawdown of that two million dollars is attributable mostly to those two projects. So we're, I, you know, in my opinion, we're pretty healthy as far as ending fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-two estimated at, uh, just around sixteen million dollars. Um, here's the, uh, budget changes that we made since the, uh, the last iteration. You can see the, the fund on the left-hand side, uh, what the diff- and I'll basically go through each line item, talk about what the difference was. So the first two line items, we, uh, actually there's a number of, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of those line items are related to updating in the estimates for our insurance for next year. And, uh, also somewhat of a change in the allocation, so the net number. Um, I'm not, I didn't add up the net number for all those. Maybe DeShree can do that real quick and we can tell you what direction, what the impact of that change in the insurance estimate. Um, you can see in the third line item, we had a two thousand dollar adjustment in what the contributions for our, um, our LTAC, a four thousand, up to four thousand dollars, so it was a two thousand dollar increase in the approved expenditures. You can see on the other line, there is also an increase, an approved increase of the LTAC board for the Freedom Festival, bumping it up to twelve thousand five hundred, based on what was in the budget, uh, original budgeted amount. Um, again, the next three are related to the insurance changes.
And overall for that, it lowers, um, the cost by a little over sixteen thousand dollars.
So overall, you, the impacts of the, uh, estimates for, for the insurance actually drop our amount. So you can see in the line item, my cursor's on right now, we have, uh, um, a change in the expenditures uh, for our, um, stormwater. And that is for the outfall projects, but it's basically a transfer between two accounts. We kind of overstated the amount that was originally in there, so that a hundred thousand, um, reduction in one is offset by increase in the, in the other opposing, uh, fund. So that's the capital account for the, uh, stormwater. Um, also you can see, uh, we reconciled some of the funding sources for some of the capital projects. And we, we noticed that, uh, we had overstated the amount required for the stormwater for capital projects. That is a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar, uh, change. Uh, so overall, from the first, um, from the last, um, budget, preliminary budget we presented to you, there's a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar, uh, change. And we are, um, any changes move, moving forward, we're not quite sure of any. Uh, you know, if we approve the, uh, the task force for the police, then, um, we don't know if that'll be approved by the time where the budget's approved, because it needs to be approved, uh, by next Tuesday. So, um, we can always do a budget amendment on that for next year. We do have included in here, we do have the four additional firefighters for, um, um, the ambulance utility. So if that's, uh, approved, then that'll move forward. If it's not, then that is definitely a budget savings of close to half a million dollars. Um, here's the ending, uh, fund balances, um, and again, I'll just focus on those couple that are a major impact to, to our drawdown or our deficit of our funds. And you can see, um, my cursor here, we have a nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar drawdown in the REIT of which a million, a million forty-two relates to the expenditures for Lions Park. And you can see that's budgeted at three point, just under three point three million dollars. And we have revenues coming in expected, oh, sorry. Um, and you can see that we've been accumulating close to a million dollars in, uh, funding for that over the last few years in the, in the REIT two fund. So, uh, definitely explainable and that's, you know, we've accumulated those monies and now it's time to pay. So that'll kind of draw those funds down. Um, you can also see in the streets, we are doing a number of capital projects and they're not completely a hundred percent funded. So that's sort of our skin in the game on, on the street improvement projects of ninety-eight thousand. And then, uh, oh, sorry, I missed the first one on the, um, the current expense fund. You can see we are showing a deficit of one point three million dollars. Uh, that's directly associated to the revenues that we received for the ARPA funds in this year that we've not expended. In this year that we've not expended. So those are, those are in the beginning fund balance, so there's an extra. Uh, one point three million dollars in this beginning fund balance that's attributable to expenditures next year. So if you take the one point three out, you know, we're pretty much at a break even in current expense. Include, and that does include the additional firefighters, both salary benefits, et cetera. Uh, the last one that shows a deficit position is the, um. The Stormwater Capital Reserve, and again, a lot of projects there that, you know, you guys approved in the capital budget at the last. The last council meeting, and we do have to pay some of our own funds. So that's sort of our skin in the game in that area. And then a small reduction in our equipment replacement, we do have a number of projects there. A number of items that we're purchasing. But overall, based on the, that prior this. Um, it's our opinion that the ending fund balance is in good shape and can definitely absorb that. So here is our reserve calculation presented before. It really hasn't changed much. There's, you know, been small changes. But I'm just highlighting, uh, we're in, we're in compliance with all of our reserve targets. Except for our current expense reserve fund, which shows it should, it's planned to be ten percent of current spend budget revenue. So we're kind of short on that, but we definitely are building that amount up. We're planning on putting. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars in there next year, and of course, that comes out of current expense. Um, so we'll have that money sitting there and hopefully a plan to increase that in the next, the next few years. Also, the facility ma- maintenance reserve has a, a target of three hundred thousand. Um, we are doing a lot of projects, um, you know, around campus here. And we are not quite at that target. You can see we're a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars shy of that target. But we are getting those capital projects completed and still keeping our total fund balance in good shape. So. Our next steps are budget review. Uh, the question is, do we want to have a budget review with finance committee? Or if we. Looked at this enough that you guys are confident to support hopefully next week. And the final step is, uh, final hearing and budget adoption next Tuesday. I know that was quick, but.
No. Yeah, I, I, as far as the finance committee, I think we're good, Brian, I am. Anyway, I think we've, um, this has been, um.
We thought so too, but we wanted to, you know, throw it out there if we want to.
I appreciate it. I, I feel well informed and I'm not sure what else I, I could bring to the table, yeah, if we talked about it, so, yeah.
I agree with Lauren.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question or comment regarding the budget? All right, Brian, it looks like you've done the job.
It's a lot of hard work. Thanks, thanks, guys.
I personally think this is the most accurate budget in my terms so far. We, we feel real confident in the numbers.
Well, thank you. Okay, so we're down to closing items. And I do have one item for good of the order. And that's regarding a public notice that we are going to be sending out tomorrow regarding council position number one vacancy. Um, I assume you all read my email that we do have. I'm a vacancy that unfortunately council member-elect John Hay no longer qualifies to be a council member. Uh, so we have a press release that we are going to be letting people know what happened and when we are going to be opening up for applications. That is in your packet. Lisa added it to the. Go to the order section. So if you have a chance, please, um, do read that. And if you have any concerns or questions, let Lisa or, uh, know as soon as possible. Cause otherwise it'll be, um, released tomorrow morning. Um, has had councilmember Peterson?
Oh, unrelated, continue, please. I have a different, different question, real quick question for, yeah.
Okay, so any questions on that situation or the press release? Okay, councilmember Peterson, then you're up.
Hey, Mike, I was just, I was driving around looking at our beautiful Christmas decorations and the lighted, um, plugged into the lamps. I, I had this thought. I remember I had a discussion, the new lamp poles we're buying. This may be the priority issue of the evening. Will they have an electrical outlets on them?
So they, they do have electrical outlets on them. They do, they do not have the banner posts on them though. To hang up the banners.
Okay.
Uh, mainly because we, we knew with the grant we received, the, there was going to be some city scanning in the game. Even the others is going to be a very tight project. We offered the university a chance if they wanted to help us to buy the banner arms. They declined because they didn't see a need in doing banner arms on, uh, Fourth Street. But those lights do have the plugs on.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I can sleep at night now. Thanks.
Any other discussions or questions for good of the order? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, council.
Thank you. So if there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh eight PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.